Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Our first topic is the Suffolk State of Agricultural Update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. With us this afternoon is the Chairman of the Suffolk Agriculture Advisory Committee, David Boselman. Mr. Boselman will present the Suffolk Annual State of Agriculture for the year and in 2023. Mr. Boselman?
I'd like to thank everybody, especially the Mayor and the City Council for being here this evening. It's honored to come here and speak to you. This is kind of face-to-face, one-on-one. This is what we need to do to get something done here in the City of Suffolk. And I would surely like to thank you for the opportunity. And first thing I'd like to do, am I speaking okay? Yeah, I guess I am. The first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank these people sitting over here, Kevin Hughes, Kevin Wine, and Meg here, and anybody else who is with the city that's been in on our meetings. They've been a huge help in navigating us through city policy and kind of steering us in the right direction. And we hope that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and making a difference. Maybe God giving y'all some guidance in agriculture here. As a lot of times, we are getting, our population seems to be getting further and further away from agriculture. And I think that's part of our mission as an ag committee, and I've said that from the beginning, is to help educate our leadership and our people in Suffolk more about what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it. And one big thing is the size of our equipment that we're moving through the city now. It's no longer four-row, 12-foot wide. Now we've got a big footprint. I mean, you might have tires spread 20-foot, 19 or 20-foot wide with these combines moving down the road. So it is an issue getting down the roads. So we just, that's part of why we're here, is to try to educate and talk to people and know what's going on. So we are thankful that we're able here to come here and do that, and with their help, they've guided us down the way. Let me see what we got here. Yep. We have a very good, diverse group here that serves on our committee. We have some, some deep thinkers here that come up with a lot of good questions and a lot of guidance. And we would also like to invite any of you that would love to come to one of our meetings. We meet every quarter, every Thursday, quarterly. And I try to keep it short, but sometimes they get a little lengthy. It's just not quite as bad as the City Council meetings are, but they do get lengthy. You know, one thing I want to talk about right now is anything the city can do so far as outreach opportunities and education about agriculture is always useful in helping us manipulate around this city. Land use program remains a significant part of why we're still here farming anyway. And then I want to talk just a little bit here about the Peanut Soil and Water Conservation District funding. Currently Suffolk is given about $5,000 to the district. We really think another $5,000 would be a benefit, and it would also be comparable to the other counties that are around us. This money, you know, helps, and it's open for all citizens here, not just farmers, but it helps in water runoff and erosion problems. You can go to this, this Peanut Soil and Water District Conservation People, and they'll go in there and come up with solutions and a lot of times funding to help you fix problems from erosion. So, you know, other counties give a fairly good amount of money, and we think Suffolk is a little bit lax in this area. And it could, you know, it's a good program to navigate this system and help save the environment. So we would definitely like to see at least around $10,000 in financial support for the district. Thank you. So, now. Support of agriculture here in the City of Suffolk. Well, we all knew what this is. This is the expansion project that Birdsong Peanut Company is doing right now in the city, made an investment here, donation of $25,000 to help them in this. And of course, they're going to increase their industry here and hopefully keep it here for many years to come. We, let me get my papers right here. I've lost them somewhere. We went in here, we decided we were going to try to do an agricultural impact. Well, this can be quite complicated for us and anybody else, I think. So this is going to be our first stab at getting this done. We're going to try to do a little bit better next year. May have to have some support here from the city to get this done. So we went and looked at agricultural impact. I've been working on this yesterday and today and gotten some more information since I talked to Kevin Hughes. But I'm going to start with what he's got right here on the screen. Mr. Youngkin, Governor Youngkin, he just gave this on November 29th. Farming and forestry contributes about $100 billion annual to the Commonwealth's economy and supports about 500,000 jobs. That's a good amount of money. So we went back and looked. And we were using Virginia Beach as an example, and I don't have a couple of slides here because, like I said, we kind of just got this done today and yesterday. So Virginia Beach has a formula where they can take the crops that are being grown there, figure out their yield, figure out what that yield times the value of it, come up with a gross income, then they have a factor that they can plug into the formula and come up with an economic impact value throughout the city of Virginia Beach. So our extension, two of our extension agents, I think, were involved in going down there to find out how to do this, get this formula and figure it out. So, and I have some of these extra if y'all would like some to look at. What you took are corn, soybeans, wheat peanuts, cotton. Then we added in some fruits and vegetables, some ornamentals, some greenhouse stuff, a little pasture, a little hay, horses, or something that they did come up with. Maybe a few, a couple, a few hog houses here, forestry, cover crop type thing. We did not get much out of the farmer's market. We really couldn't come up with a value there. But anyway, when it was all said and done, they come up with a gross income of $58 million, 200, well, $58 million, $300,000 in round figures. And then they plugged into the formula that Virginia Beach has, and they come up with an economic impact of agricultural products in the City of Suffolk of about $186,500, just in the City of Suffolk from agricultural impact. Now, that does not include our other industries that are here in the City of Suffolk. You know, we have Birdsong Peanuts, Producers Peanuts, Planters Peanuts, Amadis Industries, Old House Mulch, Maher and Chemical and Ag, Cameron Chemicals, Suffolk Cotton Gin. And I thought about this too. You also have cold storage. You know, a lot of peanuts are stored on cold storage. So we have a lot of industry here pertaining to ag in the City of Suffolk that also is having a huge agricultural impact here. What that value is to us, I do not know, but it's got to be huge. So we went even further and we got some information from Vdax. One of our members on our committee, he was, he's pretty sharp on his numbers, and he went in and he dug into this further and looked at the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, which is Vdax, and he came up with some more figures for us. It is noted by Vdax that more than 97% of all farms in Virginia are family-owned. And the Governor's Office, he announced the other day a roundabout figure of $100 million. Right here on the website, they say it's more about $82 billion in there. And agriculture alone is the number one private industry in the state. Vdax and USDA report there are approximately 7.7 million acres of land across the state of Virginia in agricultural production. And if you divide those two numbers together, the $82 billion and the 7.7 million acres, you end up with one acre of agricultural land bringing in nearly $11,000 annually. You plug that into the almost $42,000 of, uh, 42,000 acres, excuse me, of land here in the City of Suffolk, and that could equate just under $450 million annually to the combined state and local economy. So agriculture does play a huge part in the economies here in the state of Virginia. It is playing a part here in the City of Suffolk. We would love to get a little, do a little better job on these numbers. Like I said, this is our first stab at doing this, and I'm kind of happy to say I don't think we did too bad a job. And we tried to use, again, we were trying to use a lot of rounding of the numbers to get there and to try to figure this out. But agriculture contributes a lot here to the City of Suffolk and into the state also. And we just wanted, you know, to try to take a stab at that and everybody be aware of this. So now, we're going to talk about the loss of farmland here in the City of Suffolk. Last year, I think I reported there were 42,533 acres of open row crop land. This year, according to the FSA Office, which is the Farm Service Agency, which I'm a part of, it was down to 41,718 acres this year. We lost 774 acres in the one year. That's a 1.8% decrease. Over a 21 period, it's been 8,822 acres lost at a 17.5% loss. So we are steadily losing land, farmland, open farmland, and I suspect it's going to continue. I know it's going to continue because I know there's farmland that has not been taken, taken out of this process yet at FSA Office. So it is continuing on its downward, downward trim. We're going to skip this right now. Go one more. All right. Come on back up. So we talked about the economy, the economic impact of agriculture a little bit, and we talked about the loss of farmland a little bit. And the real reason why we're here tonight is to give the state of agriculture. And I want anybody, everybody to feel free to ask me any questions at any time. Don't let me keep rambling and not go anywhere that you want to ask a question. And I thought about this, and I'm going to make a statement. I thought about it, and I thought about it, and I said yes, and then I said no. Don't make this statement, and then I decided to do it anyway. The state of agriculture in the City of Suffolk is in distress. Why? What's the reason that state agriculture is in distress? All right, I mentioned one thing here briefly. Well, was the roads. We have to have an understanding, and I'm not, we don't, we're not here to fuss, not here to put through anybody under the bus. I'm just here to say that we're kind of, the city and some of our officials and our people here are out of touch with how big this equipment is going down the road. There are a lot of tree limbs that hang on over in these roads, and we try to call them in and report them, and they send out crews and we get them cut. But the problem is, we need to be able to use the shoulders of the road at all times when we meet somebody. And it's a lot of times we go to go over into the shoulder of the road, and there's tree limbs that are growing in from the sides. And I can't get over without running in the tree limbs to get out of people's way. Another thing is the tree limbs come down and hang down on, it's hitting the tops of the equipment. It's knocking. We have GPS domes on top. It might cost $10,000, $15,000, and it's hitting them. Some of them are busting. Then you have lights on that are getting busted out and hanging down. So it is a real problem with the tree limbs, even with us calling it in. It's a problem. And some of these limbs hanging down, they will send their long-reach cutters out, and they can cut the sides pretty good, but they can't get these limbs hanging down. And then they have to get a bucket truck from other areas such as a streetlight crew to try to cut the limbs out of the way. So it is a big issue, and I, and I kind of mentioned this to Mr. Hughes a while back. You know, used to, when the highway department was in charge, they had a big motor grader with a huge cutter on it. And they would go around special round in the wintertime and cut these limbs back. They would reach everything they could reach. They had a crew behind it, and they would either, you could either mulch it and throw it back in the woods, or either you, you would pick it up if it was in the area, you couldn't mulch it and haul it away. And that was the way the roads were maintained, and we've kind of gotten away from that. And our equipment has gotten big, and we have this need to be able to use the shoulders of the road when we meet traffic especially. And we find ourselves, especially with the spray, for me anyway, going down these roads in the summertime when the limbs get heavy, and I find myself going around curves on the wrong side of the road to avoid the limbs. And then, you know, if I meet somebody, that's an even bigger problem. So I just, we just need to try to do something more about these limbs hanging down in the way, and I know it costs money, and I know that, you know, it's not as big a deal as going on some of these major roads, especially in Northern Suffolk. But this equipment costs a lot of money, a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars when we go down the road with this equipment. So that is a distressful area, and I just think we've been out of touch a little bit with how big this equipment is. And we've been a little lax on the limbs in the areas, and I think it's something we need to take care of. We also need to take care of the roads. And I, and I find this, again, and I want to give a prime example. You know, the City of Suffolk is growing all the time. I mean, we see that. You know that. And so we have areas where Suffolk growth is meeting Suffolk agriculture. You know, there's a line there, imaginary line, and it meets. So when we go to do new road projects, we need to be thinking about not just keeping the public safe and how we're going to get in and out of this area, but we need to figure on how is this man going to come down here with the piece of equipment? And I'm going to give you an example, and then I'm going to move on. But down here at Publix, you just put a Publix up down here on the end of Route 10, 460. It's just opened. There's a, there's a, put a median in down there. Well, it's a bottleneck on this side of the road, and then it's a bottleneck. When you come back and you have a median here, and you've got a sign here, and you've got a hydrant here, where I use that road all the time going to Route 10 to farm. Had big peanut farm down there. I had, I don't know, 65 acres of peanuts down there on Route 10, and I needed to get there and pick them peanuts. I couldn't get through there with my peanut equipment. My peanut equipment is made right here at BioAmados, has a 19-foot wide footprint. And so I couldn't get through there. And I'm going down there to pick a peanut crop, just going straight to Birdsong Peanuts, right here in the City of Suffolk also. But I can't get down that road anymore with that equipment. Tried to reroute me around the backside. I can't get through there. The only way I end up getting through there is I went down Murphy's Mill Road and went to Duke. And I come out at Duke in town, went through all this, went by Mr. Duman's place, and went down through every stoplight down Route 10. And it was a little bit of trouble getting through there, but I can't use that road down that Kingsfort Road anymore. We need to, our city officials and the council and everybody else here needs to be aware that we've got to use these roads also. And, you know, this project started here, and I'm sure it's going to be some more somewheres else, but we, we've got to keep us in mind that we have to use these roads also. And so that's all I'm going to say about that. And, but we do like to keep this in mind. Another problem, I don't got crossed up here. Something else. What was it? Oh, we talked about the loss of farmland. So, yep, we're losing farmland every year. I'm going to talk about the solar panels a little bit. And I can probably stay here for a while talking about them. Where's my people? We, um, do not, the committee does not support the use of farmland for solar panels. Right down to the, that's it. We don't support it. Don't care if you put it on your home, put it in your yard, put it on this building, put it on the school. We don't care. But for us, to take in some of the best land here in the state of Virginia, which is right here on the East Coast, and to use that land, in our eyes, it's destroying the land. And I've sat in this council, and I've seen this council having meetings on solar farms, and I've seen the people get up here and talk, and talk about how good it is and how much energy they're going to produce, and you can put this land right back into production. And I'm here to tell you, it's not exactly what they're telling you. If you go and look, go out here on, right out there on 460 to that solar farm, it's rock roads that were put in in between there. You cannot grow crops on rock roads. They can't get all them rocks back up. Never seen it done. I've seen Dominion Power put in rock driveways many times to put in them new towels. Never been able to get them rocks back up. Never been able to grow much anything there. So we look at it as a destruction of farmland. They go in here and they get it, it gets compacted, and that's one reason it won't grow. Now, there's a man here with Virginia Tech, W. Lee Daniels, and he is doing research. He's been doing research for a long time on reclamation of mining lands. And now he's doing studies on solar scale, utilities, solar scale farms. He was asked by the Governor to do this. He's also working with DEQ. I think I talked about last year how they were quite worried about the water runoff coming from these things, which is making the land impermeable to the water. It has a lot of standing water on it from time to time, and also if there's any kind of hill structure to it, it will run off. So Mr. Daniel has been working on these things, and I actually had some conversations with him and read some of his stuff here online. And, you know, he talks about solar farms in particular. And he says, you know, we can, we can, we can get most of these things back to where they were until you get to row crop land. Wait a minute, I'm going too far too quick. Once you get to the row crop land, due to compaction of the land and different other factors such as the zinc coming out of those poles, it gets harder and harder to get that land back. Somewhere in this program, let's see. Here we go. It talks about where you can probably get it back with, for hay, grass, maybe even trees. And somewhere in his research, it goes on to talk about the trees, how they are stunted for a number of years before they actually get back to growing. But then down here at the bottom, he says, "Any assurance that highly productive agricultural lands, row crops, can be readily returned to even approach existing 80% levels of soil productivity must be made very carefully." In talking to him, and there's another page in here that talks about it also. It really, the best you can hope for is to get it back to 75 to 80% of where it was at the first, at the beginning. When you do that, you take out all the profitability of farming it in, in old-style row crops like we've been raising around here. You might be able to farm in between some of it. You might be able to raise some vegetables. I don't know. I don't know how bad the compaction and the zinc would be on that. But to get it back to where it is now is nobody impossible, especially without trying the process of working on tearing it up. And this is some of the things he does. He goes in there and he has to recommend deep tillers. He's got a bulldozer pulling some tillers through here. And this is one thing I have not seen or heard in talking about putting solar farms in the City of Suffolk, is what are you going to do about the compaction ratio here? And this man is really talking a lot about it in his work, is the compaction ratio. You've got to tear this land up. You have to feed it with nutrients. You have to feed it with lime. You have to fertilize it and tell them about putting even different types of compost down. Some places he's adding topsoil. And so we've heard nothing about how they're going to fix that land back to its original state. In the state of Virginia, when you go to reclaim mineral, land that has had mining done to it, they have to bring it back to where it was the best they can, and they have, the company has to maintain it for two years before it goes back to the owner. I've heard nothing about that either. And then I've heard nothing about the compaction. And I've seen the people get up here and talk, and talk about how good it is. And how much energy they're going to produce and you can put this land right back into production. And I'm here to tell you, it's not exactly what they're telling you. If you go and look, go out here on, right out there on 460 to that solar farm, it's rock roads that were put in in between there. You cannot grow crops on rock roads. They can't get all them rocks back up. Never seen it done. I've seen Dominion Power put in rock drivesways many times to put in them new towels. Never been able to get them rocks back up. Never been able to grow much anything there. So, we look at it as a destruction of farmland. They go in here and they get it, it gets compacted. And that's one reason it won't grow. Now, here's a man here with Virginia Tech, W. Lee Daniels. And he is doing research, he's been doing research for a long time on reclamation of mining lands. And now he's doing studies on solar scale, utilities, solar scale farms. He was asked by the governor to do this, he's also working with DEQ. I think I talked about last year how, um, they were quite worried about the water runoff coming from these things, which is making the land impermeable to the water. It has a lot of standing water on it from time to time and also if there's any kind of hill structure to it, it will run off. So, Mr. Daniel has been working on these things. And I actually had some conversations with him and, um, read some of his stuff here online. And, you know, he talks about, uh, solar farms in particular. And he says, you know, we can, we can, we can get most of these things back to where they were until you get to row crop land. Wait a minute, I'm going too far, too quick. Once you get to the row crop land, um, due to compaction of the land and, um, different other factors such as the zinc coming out of those poles, um, it gets harder and harder to get that land back. Somewhere in this program, let's see. Here we go. It talks about where you can probably get it back with, uh, for hay, grass, uh, maybe even trees. And somewhere in his research, it goes on to talk about the trees, how they are stunted for a number of years before they actually get back to growing. But then down here at the bottom, he says, "Any assurance that highly productive agricultural lands, row crops, can be readily returned to even approach existing 80% levels of soil productivity must be made very carefully." In talking to him, and there's another page in here that talks about it also. Um, it really, uh, the best you can hope for is to get it back to 75 to 80% of where it was at the first, at the beginning. When you do that, you take out all the profitability of farming it, uh, in, in, in old style row crops like we've been raising around here. You might be able to farm in between some of it, you might be able to raise some vegetables, I don't know, I don't know how bad, um, the compaction and the zinc would be on that. But to get it back to where it is now is nobody impossible, especially without trying, um, the process of working on, um, tearing it up. And this is some of the things he does, he goes in there and you, he has to recommend deep tillers, he's got a bulldozer pulling some tillers through here. And this is one thing I have not seen or heard in talking about putting solar farms in the city of Suffolk, is what are you going to do about the compaction ratio here? And this man is really talking a lot about it in his work, is the compaction ratio. You've got to tear this land up, you have to feed it with nutrients, you have to feed it with lime, you have to fertilize it and tell them about putting, uh, even different types of compost down. Some places he's adding topsoil. And so, we've heard nothing about how they're going to fix that land back to its original state. In the state of Virginia, when you go to reclaim mineral, uh, land that has, uh, had mining done to it, um, they have to bring it back to where it was the best they can and they have, the company has to maintain it for two years for it goes back to the owner. I've heard nothing about that either. Um, and then I've heard nothing about the compaction ratio, all thing I've heard is oh, it can go back and be farmland. I doubt very seriously that it will ever go back to farmland. That is another loss. And to us, you know, you, to, to us, you know, we look at this and you say, well, you're taking something that's green, it's producing food, fiber, it's also producing oxygen because you have plants growing on it. We're going to put solar panels on there that are not efficient. And also, it's taking fossil fuel to make these panels. It has to be mined, these elements have to be mined, they have to be melted and processed, they have to go through extreme heat, all this is done with fossil fuel. So, what are we doing? You know, we're using fossil fuel and mining to produce them, then we're coming over here, you're going to lose your farmland, doubt it's going to ever be productive as it once was. And we're going to put these up and these are inefficient. And I'm going to tell you why they're inefficient. Tell you back there. We had the opportunity, one of our moments, to talk with a man from Dominion Power who was an engineer, he would not give his, his personal opinion, but he would give us the facts. Facts are, you know, these panels are only about 34% efficient at best when the sun is shining. He tells on, he tells us that during the winter time, from the hours of 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM is when they produce most of the energy. And from the summertime, in the summertime, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, that's when they produce most of the energy at a 34% efficiency. So, I'm being the farmer I am and I watch the weather every morning, every night to see what's going on, my livelihood depends on this. I started in January, I took a calendar about, well, might have been the second or third week of January, and I started writing down the weather for each day throughout this year. I missed a couple of weeks, January, a couple of weeks in July and then the end of this year. Um, I'd done sunshine, cloudy rainy, and then there were days when we had clouds and, clouds and sun. And, you know, we got to have enough sun to produce energy. So, I did that, broke it down into three ways. And I come up and I looked at it and I ended up with like 200 and about, uh, 290 days of, that I looked at the weather and I wrote this down. We had about a 57% of the days had sun, about 43% were cloudy and raining. What I done is I took the cloudy and rainy days and I divided that amongst the sunshine and the clouds, you know, get partial credit each way. So, now we're looking at, we've got panels that only produce energy during a certain number of days at a 34% efficiency rate. And we're only getting about 57% of the days enough sunshine to even produce it. That doesn't sound too good to me. I'm not sure that we can do it on the east coast and produce the energy they claim we are. On top of, and this is when a real killer for me also, we're subsidizing all these things to be put up. And without subsidies, they will not function, they would not be here today. They do not produce enough energy. They, we get our utility bill and I know you get utility bills from Dominion Power. If you look at them, you'll be in charged a fee for energy, clean, renewable energy plan, a clean energy project, an offshore wind project, and on top of that, they want you to pay for the coal ash closure also. So, we're paying for it all. We are, state, federal, they're giving them government subsidies. And also, as taxpayers, we're having to pay it if you have Dominion Power. Now, if I have REA, I don't pay that fee because they don't believe in it and they don't even want solar panels. But, this whole thing with solar panels, and like I said, I don't care who puts it where, but to take your farmland in is, is just not, it's not, no, it's not right. And it, um, without the money, I mean, it's all about money, it's just all about money. And they're going to be so far out of line in the years to come, um, there are much better avenues which to go for energy. There are new nuclear fusion projects going over hydrogen and helium atoms that will be the future of how our energy is produced. Uh, Japan has already put one facility up, France is in the, um, process of putting up another one, a huge one, that they claim we will never need coal or gas again to produce energy. Why we are doing this to our farmland and our land here in the State, United States, I do not understand. So, we as the farming community do not support solar farms taking up our land. And in doing that, we, we had three things where we made, um, recommendations. And, and again, we don't have any authority, we're just making suggestions. We're bringing up some ideas, we present them to you to help agriculture and where we are. And solar farms is just another way we're losing farmland here in this, in, in this city. So, and that, and we see it as a waste of, um, personally, I see it as a waste of God's green earth. But if you put it on your land, I don't care. You put it on your house, I don't care. And I'm, by the way, on Channel 10, and I've seen this many times on Channel 10, if you watch Channel 10 News, uh, people talking about it, putting it on them houses and they're not putting off the energy and gathering the energy they're supposed to be putting off. And I've seen them complaining on Channel 10, you can probably look it up and find it somewhere. But anyway, so, but we actually made a recommendation and sent y'all a letter to, to tell you that we would like to see a 1% cap on it. And 1% cap on the farmland here, um, that is actually being used for farmland. You know, you've got 160,000 acres here, you say is ag land, zoned ag land, but it's just so much of that that's not being used for agriculture land. They come in here to put them solar panels up, they want to use farmland. It's already clear and it's, most time it's flat, let's go ahead and go to work. They will use, uh, forest and woods land, a lot of land in Surrey is being cleared and I understand that that is a mess over there. They went in there and cut those trees down, piled them up and burned them. They burned the stumps, they pushed it up, we've had these heavy rains and the whole place is flooded with water. So, they will do that, but they love to get a hold of your farmland. And that's just another way we're going to lose farmland and use a, lose a valuable resource. So, we said, well, why don't we take a 1% cap of our farmland? Land that is being grown, not only in our row crops, we added in another 6,000 acres of land to that to make it 47,000 some odd acres of land that's being used for strawberries and home gardens and asparagus and, uh, just some vegetables and things in general, some pastures and things. So, but anyhow, that would have been 470 acres at a 1% cap and which we're already there. So, Kevin Wine and the planning and zoning, um, they decided, well, how about I, uh, understand, they decided maybe a half a percent cap on the total number of acres that is agged and zoned. So, that's, you know, would be somewhere around 800 acres. But it's, you know, this is our reason for how we feel about solar panels and, and I wanted you to be aware of that. And it's just, I want to say a couple of more things about solar panels before I'm done. I hear a lot about property rights. Hear a lot about that. And, and I have some thoughts on that, my, may not be the committee's, but I have a couple of thoughts on it. I believe it's everybody's right to sell their land. They own a property owner, they got the right to sell it. They got the right to sell it for whatever they can get for it. Now, that being said, um, I, as a property owner, I have some land that's been in my family for 120 years and I am still paying taxes on it, year after year after year. So, do I really own that land or am I just renting it to abide by the rules here? I don't know. If I owned a lot in Riverview, could I put a single wide trailer in there? No, I don't think so. I think everybody would have a fit. And so, it's not my right just to do anything I want. We have rules and regulations in which we live by in this world. That's why we have them. It's so that we won't make mistakes and do things that we shouldn't, that are out of place. Now, to go a little step further. We also have them so that we can, uh, do the right things. How do I put this? There are a lot of times when we come up with ideas, and this is all through history. You can look back through history and history is riddled with people coming up with good ideas, great ideas. And a few years down the road, you go back and you look, oh, this was a terrible idea. This was just bad, it was bad for what we done, we shouldn't have done that. How many times in history can we go back and look at that and say that we had a bad, a bad idea? And I remember an example of that I read here a while back. It was a man, I don't know, maybe in the 30s or 40s, he was a doctor of some kind. He wanted to post Pulitzer, what is it, Pulitzer Prize for his accomplishment, for his accomplishment was electric shock therapy on people. Uh, people who may have a mental or physical condition and he was using an electric shock therapy at the time, they thought it was great work. Now, we know that was a terrible idea, matter of fact, it was cruel to those people that they gave electric shock therapy to. So, there are a lot of times, um, we can look back and say, well, that was a bad idea, we shouldn't have done that. And I, I firmly believe this was one of them, uh, when you get to talking about solar panels. So, I'm going to close on that and I guess that's a way, um, we, we, we have to be mindful of where we're going. You have to see what, you know, we're looking here at the future, we're here talking about a comprehensive plan right now for 2045. We have to have a vision of where we want to go and what we're going to do and, and we have to have good ideas. So, can we, can it always be all right about personal property rights? I don't think so. Never has been, we've never been able to do just whatever we want to do, when we want to do it. We have rules and regulations to live by and some are good, some are bad. So, that's my thought on that and I know you may have some more, um, questions and it is a difficult thing to answer. So, anyway, I'm going to leave the solar panel issue alone, I think you know where we are on that one and, and why we come up with the figures and what we want, why we wanted to do it. Let me get off of this here. Uh, this is an area I'm going to touch briefly on, then I'm going to move on to something else. Um, and we've looked at this last year, talking about, you know, minor and major subdivisions. We have this in, out in the country. We have little minor subdivisions almost looking like major subdivisions and it is a problem. There's a lot of land, it's, it's getting sold out there and then instead of just cutting lots, um, not only like this, but a lot, a lot of lots are getting cut up, farms are getting cut up and, and, you know, you're supposed to have three cuts and a residual unless there's something else involved in it, sometimes you can get more, sometimes not. And it is a bigger problem than we think and, and that's another one we talk about and I'm not exactly what to do about them. But, um, I have done a little bit of research in looking at the, uh, American Farmland Trust. It's an organization trying to conserve, protect farmland. And one thing they talk about in there, that is a big problem in locality, is what probably causes more loss of farmland than anything is, uh, uncontrolled low-density development. That loses more farmland probably than anything else in the state. They talk about it, it's a complicated issue. I can't tell you exactly what the answer is to that, but it, it needs to be studied a little bit. I think it would do Suffolk a lot of good to study and see what could be done to kind of control that a little bit more without making a big problem. And I think part of that, um, and I'll address this in a little while. Why don't I go on to the next subject before I go any more, any more on that one? What I want to talk about now, let me see. I'll kind of get back to that in a little bit. I, I said that the state of agriculture in the city of Suffolk was in distress and that we've talked about the roads a little bit and we've talked about the, um, forestry and, and, uh, loss of acreage and the trees hanging out there and we talked about the solar panels, now I want to talk about it a little bit more. Suffolk and Nassau County merged in 1974, we're getting ready to have our 50th anniversary next year, it's been 49 years. Agriculture at that time was a big deal, big deal in Suffolk. Peanut capital of the world, big deal. And, you know, peanuts are part of the city seal and were mentioned in the plan at the charter. And when you do that charter, you know, and it's my understanding, I think it was done then, you had to have some kind of plan going forward. I don't know if it was called a comprehensive plan at that time, um, but we do comprehensive plans now and I'm assuming they had something like a comprehensive plan that was going forward from the time that this city was chartered. And farmland used to be a big deal and it was, um, talked about in there, talked about conservation of that farmland in there. And it was also talked about an agricultural department. And it was in the original plan that we would have an agriculture department here in the city of Suffolk. So, we've been 49 years and we don't have an agriculture department. And, and of course, there's nothing that we have done here, and I, I mean, this should have been long, done a long time ago. But we feel a need that maybe we should go on and have an agriculture department here. It could be a huge help in this coexistence between the growing Suffolk and agricultural Suffolk, just to make a bridge there. Issue with the roads, we have a new road project coming up, we want to go in here and put a median. Let's go to agriculture, go to agriculture department or the ag committee, either one, and let's ask and see what kind of problem this could create. Or, you know, how about these roads I hear, these limbs getting too wide out here, or is this road getting unbearable? Or just, how big is your equipment now? So, an agricultural department, and it could also serve in conjunction with, um, the, um, cooperative extension service at times. It could also be used to promote other programs to the citizens such as the Peanut Soil and Water Conservation District. We have some flooding issues, you could have, and have citizens come in there, talk to these people and maybe to get them hooked up with the, uh, conservation district, get that problem done. We think it could be a huge help to the citizens here if they knew about it and if they knew how to use it. We could also start in on some public and private conservation programs. Again, there are a lot of private and public funds, um, available that don't even, don't even have anything to do with the city, the state and federal programs, there are money available. Matter of fact, I talked to a man here recently, I don't know that y'all, y'all probably know about it. But he said the NCRS, uh, was trying to look at a piece of land here in South Suffolk somewhere to buy and put in a conservation easement. Uh, something about some longleaf pines that were growing there naturally, which have gotten to be kind of a rarity in the state. So, and they were going to use funds that they had available. So, there are some funds available where it's one way our citizens could sell their land, uh, put it in a conservation district or, um, some other kind of program and they may want to do that and have their farm kept for eternity here in the city of Suffolk as an open space. An ag department would, here would be the perfect thing to oversee that and to promote these programs. So, that's another thing that we thought maybe the city council should take a look at. And, and, and here's another thing, I'm going to go right on from there and I'm going to go right into, um, I want to talk a little bit about the comp plan. We are in the midst of the 2045 comp plan, uh, it should be, I'm, I'm assuming it should be getting close to the end of being finished, I don't know. But agriculture has always been a part of the plans going forward. And I guess we got a little lax at, at, at farmers and the rural community at one point and we're not as up in a part of things going on here in Suffolk as we should have. And so, at some point, and I believe it was when the 2035 comp plan come out, land conservation and ag were kind of dropped, you didn't really see anything in it about it. I don't know why, but it was. But, and, and I tell you, to go along with that, and I'll give you a little piece of trivia here. My mother and father, we, in the city of Suffolk, I don't know if everybody knows, when in the city of Suffolk, we used to have a farm family of the year. Uh, would get picked every year and they'd have a little banquet for us and my mother and father were the first to ever get picked here in the city of Suffolk. In 2008, myself and my wife and two sons, we were picked for farm family of the year. And I think I'm right on this, but I think that was the last year that it was done and that program has, was since dropped also. So, things have gotten dropped over time and like I said, I think the farming community got lax and, and until, um, it didn't affect us at the time, you know, a lot of building was going up in Northern Suffolk and other areas and we weren't really, you know, do what you want to do. But now those areas have gotten built up, everything's coming this way and it is affecting us in a really big way. So, that's one reason we come and wanted to get this, uh, committee going so that we could get more involved into what's happening here. And so, we're trying to get back in that groove and, and, and make a little difference here and try to do a little something. So, with the new 25, 45 comp plan being developed, we've had to So with the new 25, 45 comp plan being developed, we've had the privilege of being very involved in it and we really appreciate the opportunity. Um, Mike Griffin served on the committee that went to, they had their little, uh, meetings and, and carrying on helping in the development of the plan. Uh, we as a committee, uh, have been, um, had contact with the ones doing the plan. We've had a lot of conversation with people about this plan and we appreciate that opportunity. And we certainly hope that agriculture, uh, will be, um, in the plan, that there is a place for it in that plan. And one thing that we really look forward to, um, well, let me back up a hair more. So in the development of this plan, um, the city, of course, you know this, but the city had, what, eight, nine meetings throughout the public. And a matter of fact, I saw many of you there. I think I went to all of them, but two. And I sit through these meetings, I wanted to see, I didn't, I never said a word. I always wanted to see what other people in other areas had to say. And so that's what I done. I wanted to sit and see and listen. And I saw some of the same people coming to meetings and say the same things every time, but I also saw a lot of new people coming in every time and had, wanted to say something and have a voice. And so I look around me and so, you know, one of the biggest issues I saw and heard was to talk about the overdevelopment and the building and then they couldn't, the people couldn't get down the roads. The roads are so congested, they can't move, they can't get through there. So, I mean, I look at that and I look at these people and I mean, they're very upset about where they're living there and, and the roads and they can't get through it. They just can't get through. And then I hear them talking about they need more open space. They want somewhere to ride their bike, to run, to jog, they want to run downside the river. They want a boat access to the river. So they want to see more open space, they're craving more open space. And then you hear some of them talking about keeping the farmland here where, where we can see the crops growing, we can see the equipment up and down the road moving and, and farmers out there working. We need to save our farmland. We need open space, we need better roads, we need less congestion. And this is what I hear the citizens hear. And I hope this comprehensive plan is going to address all this and give us some guidance. And that's exactly what this plan is, is to guide us into the future. Um, and, you know, I think, I guess it's voted on here by the city council. I'm assuming the city council will vote on the plan. And I also know that really, um, we have to have this plan going forward, but we don't necessarily, if we feel like it's not a bad plan or something's wrong with it, you have the option of voting against it or voting for it. So it is a plan going forward and I hope that everybody, especially on this council and in the city management, will give it deep thought as to where we'll be in the next 20 years. And I'm assuming a lot of you have children and grandchildren. And so we do have a lot to think about what we're going to leave them here. We certainly don't want it to be so congested as what I heard people talking about as those meetings that they can't move through Suffolk. So that is a very important thing to do when we look at that 2045 comp plan. Another thing which we feel like would be a huge opportunity for the city in that comp plan was to do some type of land conservation preservation program. Uh, Virginia Beach, um, already has such plans in place. And, um, we feel like, um, we've had conversation, I know Shelley has had conversation going forward with people in Virginia Beach about how their plan works. And, um, so I, I really feel like it's time for us to do something like that here in the city of Suffolk. And again, when you talk about establishing maybe, uh, agricultural department, this would also be another job for them, you know? If we could get a preservation program started and figure out what the city wanted, um, we could move forward with that. These people could help oversee that and implement this program. So anyhow, we, we, we do recommend that the city council examine this opportunity and uh, and how to pay for such a program and, and, and maybe establishing some kind of financial mechanism to fund it. We'd, we, we feel like the, the, the citizens will be behind this. We, from what we heard at those meetings and people that come to talk to us on a regular basis, um, this would be a good thing for the citizens. This is something that they're looking for. So we, we feel strongly that the city council should, should look at this and, um, and move forward and, and try to come up with some kind of such programs. And like I said, even if, if the city can't finance such a program, but we could at least have an organization here within the city and an department to make other programs that are conservation minded available. So these are basically the three biggest issues that we were trying to, um, talk about and, and get some, um, city council approval on. Do we have some questions? I see some, any questions?
We're, we're working on time management.
Oh, okay. I didn't know I was about to run over. Um, I, I'll go on and get right and wind this up then. I told you, if I got to rambling, just cut me off. So anyway, this is the last two pictures I had on here anyway. Um, the right-hand picture is a picture my son took this year. We were picking peanuts, the sun was about to set and of course you had a little dust in the background, but it is one of the most peaceful times in the day to be out there before sunset. Uh, my wife actually used this for a Christmas card. And then here on the left is a picture of my house and that's my smokehouse with an American flag on it. This was painted by the Paint Suffolk. And I know, uh, some of you were there for the paintings that come out. And, um, we had a number of painters come out to our farm. Uh, matter of fact, it was about eight of them, I think. Uh, and I didn't have a picture of the most popular picture, but my, my, my wife's clothesline, if you remember from last year with the sheets blowing on it, um, that was very popular. They painted that thing four or five times. And my wife, I'm gonna tell you a couple more things, I'm gonna let you go. But she would get up every morning, she washed sheets once a week, but she got up every morning and put them sheets on that line so them people could paint them regardless of what they were. So, uh, but they came out and, um, but I went to the art show when they, um, produced these and I know some of you probably went too. And one of the things that struck me there is, um, you know, I looked at all the paintings in there. And what I saw, um, was pictures of, um, old houses. I saw pictures of, uh, fishing boats. I guess they were crabbing boats, maybe two fishing boats, little old marina houses. I saw some of the Des Moines Swamp, saw some of the old meal house on Myrtle Road. Um, I saw pictures of sprays, sprains in fields. I saw my combine, they had a picture of my combine picking corn, I should have bought it, but I didn't, I thought it was too high. And so it, it was numerous pictures of outside things in our community, a few old homes and, and things like that. But you know what I didn't see? I did not see any pictures of, uh, housing developments. I didn't see any warehouses. I didn't see roads that were congested. One of the most striking pictures I saw, and I don't think it won a award, it was a rural country road there, early in the morning, the sun was coming down through the mist and it just looked like a piece of heaven right there. It was a pretty picture, I thought it should have won. But, um, my point is, this is what the people, this was real art in their eyes. This is the nostalgia of being in a different time and in a different place. And this is, this is a lot of what people are looking for now. And so, um, I have one more statement, if I can find it on this piece of paper. And I want to read you this and then I'm gonna leave you alone. But I find it quite ironic that we are here today and I'm trying to convince not only the city council, but all people that are here to listen to me today, to preserve land that is growing food for us to eat, fiber for all of us to have clothes, and plants that clean carbon dioxide and impurities out of our air and provide oxygen for us to breathe. I don't understand why we don't want to move forward and conserve the land that feeds us and nourishes us. Why not? We've got to have something here for the next generation. And this is going on all over the state of Virginia, all over this country. And if we don't take time to preserve some land here, it will be gone. And ag simply will disappear here. So we need to have our minds together and thoughts and decide which way we want to go. And with that, I just leave you with two things, two words, why not? And then I'm going to wish everybody in this room a Merry Christmas and to all a good night.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bosman. Um, council, we've got, um, if you have any questions or comments at this time, we'll try to limit them to a total of 15 minutes, uh, for the entire council, so just try to be mindful of that. Uh, but at this time, I'll open it up to questions and comments. Always quick. Uh, Councilman Johnson?
I'll be brief. This is just a comment, David. Thank you for the report. Um, I, I personally think that the ag committee has done a tremendous job. You don't think sometimes that you're accomplishing anything, but what you're bringing to the forefront is the fact that we are an agricultural community and we need the input of our agricultural community. And I, I'm very impressed with what you guys have brought forward. We want to hear from you. Um, and I, for one, appreciate what you're doing and I want to continue to see it happen. And we're not always going to be in agreement, obviously, because we are a big and growing city, but, but thank you. I thank the ag committee and keep reaching out, finding new things that, to bring to the forefront, just like the roads. This is something we've known we've had a problem with for years, but now we've got to approach it from a standpoint and fix it. So, and then we can as a group and as a, as a city. So I thank you for what you've said today.
Councilmember Butler-Barley.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I don't, I don't have any questions, but, um, because I'm kind of on the inside of this whole thing, but I just want to say thank you to David and to all, many, many members, if not all members of the committee are here today. And I appreciate you all's work and, um, hope that you will continue in 2024 and, uh, just, just appreciate what you're doing and, and all that you've accomplished. So thank you very much.
Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, David, thank you very much for a very, very informative presentation. Um, and I, I find it very difficult to take exception to virtually anything that you said, and I appreciate all the information that you have brought to us. One of the things, and we were talking about this a little bit before the meeting, you know, agriculture in, in our city obviously faces a lot of pressure from a lot of different directions. And one of them is, um, and, and I described it as a lack of legacy farming, you know, where you have farmers that are not fortunate like you to have children that want to step into the business and take it over. And you talked briefly about maybe some programs to provide the families with an alternative, um, outlet for that land, uh, rather than just simply selling it or leasing it to a solar facility. So I wonder if you could just kind of elaborate on that a little bit more?
Well, it's my theory and feeling that if, um, you know, a, a, a lot of the older folks, when they pass on to younger children, get it and they say, well, we're not going to farm, we need to get out, what we can get out of it, and somebody may come and want to buy that land, you know, and, and they're all from a big chunk of money. And so they sell it and it goes, it goes on, gets cut up. So, you know, maybe if we had some type of program for those old folks died and we put it out there. Now, I'm not talking about having a program and it not go out. You've got to promote it. I mean, you've got, the city has to be on promote, on board to promote it and say, you know, here, you can take your farm and put in this ag preservation program, or you can put it in this conservation program, or this conservation program has money coming from the state and you'll get these kind of credits and this. I mean, I don't understand how they all work, but if you had other avenues for them to, and a lot of them old people, and I'm telling you, um, I've, I have bought one or two farms, I've bought two farms in my lifetime and the people wanted it to stay farmland. And I've actually had another one offered to me at this point, maybe two more. And I can't afford to buy everything people want me to buy. Uh, I'm just not made of that kind of money. But I think if you had an alternative there to where, um, you know, if you sold the, the development rights and you say, we're going to keep this open space here, but you can still sell that farm, but you gotta sell it at agricultural prices, then you can find, if not a farmer, an average citizen might be able to buy that farm if he can buy it at farm land prices. Once it's cut up and you go out there and break that farm into four lots or however many, you know, the price goes up substantially of the home and the land. So if you keep it to where, all right, well, I've sold you the development rights can't be developed, just go stay open space, um, as a farmer, Mike or Joe Blow could afford to buy it, or average citizen, tell you, hey, this has been my lifetime dream to own this farm, that citizen could afford to buy it. They could at least think about buying it. So there are a lot of places, I know my brother-in-law lives in, uh, I believe it's Northam, is it Northampton County, when it's just over there on the, on the, uh, eastern shore? But anyway, whatever that is over there, and they, they're very strict on what they do with their land over there. Uh, they have a lot of land in preservation, conservation programs, a lot of land. So, and as a lot of it being down, done through other parts in the state, I just think it gives the citizens here a different avenue to go instead of just selling it off and having it built up.
Councilman Bennett.
Thank you. I will just say that, um, because Councilman Rector, I actually asked you this question that I wanted to ask about the conservation areas and all, so you've answered that. So I thank you for your presentation and it's a lot of good information that you've given us. And I think a lot of it should be looked into to see what can be done and what is available through grants or other means that can help afford to move forward with some of these programs that you're bringing forward. So I do appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Fawcett.
I appreciate you coming out this evening. It was very informative. I'd always like to hear and you brought out some good points and some things for us to, to look at and listen, as, uh, I think all of us do do that. But, uh, I just wanted to thank you and everybody else that's a part of the ag group that came out today during this presentation. So I want to thank you and, uh, you know, we appreciate what the ag's doing, you know? It's, it's, it's kind of a balancing act here, trying to get things to where, you know, whether people want to build here and communities want to be here versus people wanting to sell the land. And it's, it's, it's not any one, um, dimensional thing. It's, it's, it's just a balancing act with everything. So, um, I don't think all the ag land's going to go away. I can assure you, I'm not going to sit here and approve every solar farm that comes up here, because I'm not sold a hundred percent on it, even though I do think there is some places that, that the solar can go regardless of whether it produces or whether it doesn't. So I'm, I'm just putting that out there. I'm not a, a big time solar guy, but...
We, we're just trying to give you our point of view and reasoning.
I get you and, and I appreciate all that, I do. But, um, I want you to have a great holiday with everybody else and I appreciate what you've said here today. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you all listening, giving us the time to speak.
Oh, yes, no problem. Thank you.
Council, any other questions, comments? Um, if not, Mr. Bosman, thank you very much for your presentation. I've got three pages of notes here and some things that we obviously, uh, need to consider, not only within the comp plan, but in regards to farming, I don't think there's any question whatsoever that agriculture is not a significant part of Suffolk's heritage, Suffolk's culture and Suffolk's economy. I think that's a given. It appears just based on numbers that what we need to look at is how we can incentivize individuals to go into farming. When I'm looking at the land, we've got 161,000 acres of agricultural rezoned land and we have 41,718 active acres. That's 25%. So my math's not real good, but at least 75% of agricultural land. And I, I now understand that some of it's going to be wetlands and it's not going to be conducive to farming, but I'm sure even with those adjustments, there's probably, conservatively speaking, at least as much available, farmable land than we're actually using, if it was only 80-some thousand of the 161. So I think what we need to do is find a way to promote agriculture. agriculture, to be able to incentivize it. As far as solar is concerned, there's a lot of conflicting information out there, God knows. Reading, you read here, you read there. Obviously, it's incentivized, just like you said. There are subsidies on the state and federal level. There's no subsidies in the city of Suffolk, but the state and the feds are subsidizing, kind of like electric cars. I mean, I'm not real crazy about electric cars either, but it is what it is. They are being subsidized.
For right now.
And, you know, they're trying to promote them, and they're being subsidized. I mean, I'm not going to give you a commercial right now, but we've got, I mean, huge, there are huge incentives on hybrid vehicles right now. So from the solar panel side, just glancing in ordinance, I don't want to get into that because we're going to be considering that later on, but the additional restrictions that are being in place to help guide council in regards to whether they grant or do not grant conditional use permits for solar farms is very much needed, like it was for warehousing. As far as the specific limitation is concerned, I think that's, needs to be considered for sure, but I believe it was sent to the Planning Commission for guidance as far as the ordinance is concerned.
Yes, I understand.
And not to limit the amount. We can limit the amount up here. So in other words, if we wanted, all council had to do is put a moratorium on it in effect, even though there's no such thing as a moratorium on ordinances, so we would have to rescind the ordinance and no longer allow solar farms. And that may be a way to go. I mean, I don't know, but I think it requires some more research before we actually make that particular decision. But I appreciate everything that the Ag Committee has done. I mean, we created it for a reason, the same way we've created other avenues of engagement for citizens to relay that perspective to this body when we enter into any decisions. So keep doing exactly what you're doing, just like Councilman Johnson said. We may not agree on everything, but we need to know all sides of an issue in order to make the best decision we can. So once again, thank you very much for your presentation, and hopefully we'll be getting some more.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And look, please call on us anytime, any member with any question you ever have.
Got you. All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, our next item for our work session is the Suffolk 50-year anniversary. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, with that, I'm going to ask Kevin Hughes, Deputy City Manager, to come to the podium to give the presentation.
Wait for the slides to pop up. All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As we wrap up 2023 and look forward towards 2024, we'll be embarking on our 50th year anniversary of the, essentially the merger of the city of Suffolk and technically the city of Nansman, but mainly known as Nansman County. So to set the stage a little bit, a couple of things that were going on at the time is, Nansman County had taken a maneuver and became a city, I believe in 1972. That allowed for some better strategic thinking as both the city of Suffolk and Portsmouth were looking at annexation and expansion possibilities. And so as '74 rolled around, it ended up that both the city of Suffolk and Nansman had reached an agreement in order to move forward on a merger. And so very interesting set of issues that were occurring there and a tremendous amount of work that took place to bring both governing bodies together. I've done a little bit of reading on it and could only imagine the amount of conversation and debate that was going in at the time. Couple of things that were happening at the time related to pressures is you had the city of Suffolk essentially losing population and the Nansman area gaining population. There's an interest in city services in the county portion, specifically sanitary sewer, schools, redevelopment and housing. So all these things that we debate and discuss were top of mind back at that time. And interestingly enough, when the body came together, the first action was utility rates. Going into the budget, you'll recognize that, and a number of the businesses that were located in the county came to speak their mind about the rates that they were about to take on GE building and others. So things haven't changed that much, although they have changed that much. So also setting the stage for you, what was happening in 1974? So Hank Aaron just broke Babe Bruce's record. Godfather II was released. Richard Nixon was exiting the White House, and ABBA in Waterloo was a top winner on the radio dial. So going back in that time, and so we want to celebrate some of that stuff and have a little bit of fun coming into the next year, and so I'll touch on that briefly. At Your Places, we gave you some nostalgia. So this is the official merger ceremony program. So kind of going back and seeing what occurred from that ceremony is interesting and fun. And then we gave you a preview of some of the swag that we're looking to roll out. And so you'll see that logo a little more frequently going into next year, and so we'll definitely want that front, is front forward with everybody going forward. So you'll see that throughout the year. For the folks that don't recognize that, they'll see that more frequently. So we also have a program that we're going to dress them on our city vehicles, and so we'll be out and about with that logo. There's a shot of one of our trucks and one of the trash trucks as well. And with that, I'll ask Robert to come up. Public Works is going to be updating some signage for us on some of our major roadways.
That's why I didn't bring the big one in. So thank you very much. As you remember, at our gateways coming into the city, we have those Best 100 sign that's quite a bit dated now and needs to be removed, but our goal is, we're going to kick off with this sign you see in front of you. This is actually a small size. The big signs, I started to bring one of the old signs in, but it's about this wide and this tall, and I grabbed it up to it and I said, I can't move it. So anyway, these signs will be manufactured. Our goal is to get these put out possibly next week over the holiday, but certainly by the first week in January. So we will kick off the new year with announcing to everybody in the community that we are a 50-year-old community and start celebrating it.
So just, I'll be real brief here. So a couple of things that we're planning going into next year. At Parks and Recreation, we're planning on a 50-Fest, so we'll be able to time it well with the new downtown festival where we'll celebrate some of that great music and 70s. They're working on a fitness challenge, an opportunity to show some of the movies from 1974. I don't think we'll show Godfather II, but we'll roll through what that would be. I think there's an opportunity to do some tree plantings and use that 50-year throughout the city, so more to come on that. The library's digging in pretty deep, so they're planning 50 years and more of women's history. They're partnering with the Suffolk-Nansman Historical Society, looking at a new design for the library card. They do the Amazing Peanut Chase. This will have a 50-year theme to it, a reading challenge, some genealogy activity, top books and local authors as well. Then finally, we're working on a lot of swag, so we want to make sure everybody's all geared up and representing well, probably add some activities related to the state of the city, and then the holiday parade will be an opportunity for us well. And this is just kind of the beginning, want to set the stage a little bit, so more to come going into next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. I can't wait for all this to come down the pike. Can't wait for State of the City next year. I know you're working on it already. With that being said, I understand we do have a motion for a closed session this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Motion for a closed meeting. Item number one pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, the consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancy or term expirations for the community policy and management team, Early Childhood Development Commission, Fine Arts Commission, Human Services Advisory Board, Library Advisory Board, Local Board of Building Code Appeals, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Sister Cities Commission, Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, Tidewater Youth Services Commission, Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and the Wetlands Board. And item number two pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically Tax Map Number 10-Star 46.
Council, motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned. We'll reconvene at 6:00 P.M.